So. Use recording. There we go. Okay, so we will start the January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Town of Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, regular scheduled meeting at seven oh three P M. Valerie, I know you're on. I see you there. You're good to go.
Yes.
Okay, hey, thank you. All right, starting in, a call to order and seating of alternates. We have a full complement of nine members. So Doug and Luther, thank you for joining, obviously always part of the discussion, but just not voting tonight. Thank you. And I think John is the one up. John, is that you here? Is that your John? John Calories? Not sure. We'll get that worked out. Okay. All right, looking for review and approval of minutes from the December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Any input? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
That's Jerry DeFrain.
Yes.
I'm just letting Valerie know.
I'll second that.
And Jeff Cholinger seconded. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the December twelfth meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions?
Catherine Sampson.
Thank you, Catherine. And so moved. Okay, so those are approved. Thank you. I have a opening for public comments regarding planning and zoning for items not listed further down on the agenda. Is there any input from the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is Robert Campbell from R and N Holdings. I'd like to have you make a correction to the minutes that were not noted there. Under new business, the motion was made for our short-term rental for twenty-three Lakeside in the written minutes. It is twenty-one Lakeside Drive. The motion is in the motion either it was made correctly and typed incorrectly, but it needs to be recorded in the minutes correctly as twenty-one Lakeside Drive. If you go to new business, item B, and go to Mr. Hostello moved and Mr. Schilling seconded motion to approve special permit section, whatever, short-term rental, twenty-three Lakeside Drive, we are twenty-one Lakeside Drive, which it states in the above in the beginning of section.
Okay, as I look at my minutes that I have printed up here, I'm showing twenty-one Lakeside Drive in the Oh, are you saying in the motions? I'm sorry, you're saying in the
In the motion is in the motion, it's written incorrectly. That's
I see it here. We will make that correction, sir. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Let's slip by all of us. Thank you. Okay, and I see John. John, you've joined us. John Calories?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We have a full complement of members, so no alternates receded, but I'd love to have you join in any discussion, obviously.
Thank you. Happy New Year, by the way.
Happy New Year to you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Faletti.
Yes.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to wish you all a happy new year, Jeff, and also extend the town's appreciation to the hard work diligence that your entire commission does. I know a lot of us don't get patted on the back a lot, but it's much appreciated that the work that you folks do do. And I just wanted the record to indicate that.
Well, thank you, Bill. You know, you know, we're all here for the pats on the back. That's why we do this. Very much. We appreciate your recognition.
Do you want the name?
Mr. Corvo, Mr. Corvo, could you put yourself on mute, please, unless you're going to speak? Thank you. Okay, very good. Any other comment? Okay, moving on. Alex Bills, I see it's probably a combination two from the Chronicle totaling thirteen sixty-eighty-three. Okay. And just to let the commission members know regarding bills, Michael and I sat down and worked through the budget process for two thousand twenty-four. And one of the things we're recognizing, obviously, is the increased number of hearings that we are having. And the problem is hearings don't match up well with publication in the Chronicle. We have much more stringent requirements than just an agenda or warning a meeting that way. So we increased that section. We made a request, excuse me, to increase that part of the budget to help cover our hearings because it is costing more and more for putting in both the hearings and then the results of those hearings as required by statute to post those items. So just making you aware of the situation for our bills and our budget. Alex, any correspondence? I have none.
I have none.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't know if we've got Michael on board to ask a question of, but the public hearing scheduled for tonight, PZ two-two-nine, or warned for tonight, I should say, application for short-term rental at eighty-eight Ashford Lake Drive has been asked to be postponed by the applicant. So that will be postponed to our February meeting, February thirteenth at seven P M. I'm not getting a anything new from Michael on my text, so I guess we're doing okay. Number seven, unfinished business. And nothing on the docket there specifically to work on. We do have a couple of items, but we'll continue to work on those ongoing. New business, our first new business is PZ C dash two-two dash four, a three-lot subdivision encompassing three eighty-five slash three ninety-three Pumpkin Hill Road. Owner is T, I'm going to say Bun- Bunty, and if I kill that, I'm sorry, represented by Dory Famagletti. And I guess we'd like to hear about this application. I think we received this a while ago, and there were some delays, Dory, if I'm not mistaken. Not hearing you.
You're hearing me?
No, it came in softer now. Now we are.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
For the record, for the for the commission, I'm Dory Famagletti. I'm an attorney at Kahon, Kornsky and Capicella. I'm representing Tim Bunty and the estate of Irene Bunty in connection with this application. You're correct. It did come in a little while ago. You received it back in October. We had to wait for a couple of things. We had wetlands review the matter. Really, there was just a referral to wetlands because there are wetlands on the property. And as we go through the application, you'll see that there's no, no work really being proposed. So we just needed a referral because of the wetlands being existence on the property. They looked at that in November. We would have gone forward in December, but I didn't realize that even though we're not doing a public hearing, still need to send notice to the butters. So I apologize for that. I promptly then sent out the notices. Those have all been sent via certificate of mailing. I have delivered evidence of those mailings to Mike Demato, so he should have those for the file. So that brings us to here tonight. I'm here with my client. I also have Eric Peterson, who's here with us. He is the engineer who prepared the plan showing the three-lot subdivision. And I'd like to just kind of walk you through what's being proposed. And perhaps if it's okay, while I'm walking you through what's being proposed, could Eric share the screen and just put the plan up? So as I'm referring to parcels, you'll know what I'm speaking to? Does he have the ability to share screen?
As long as Mike can hear us and Mike is running the show, he should be able to share, allow the shared screen.
Okay, so let's give that a go, Eric. You could throw that up for us.
Okay. Just so you recognize my voice, this is Eric Peterson from Gardner and Peterson Associates. And I'm giving it a shot right now.
There we go.
This is just a color, colored up version of the color, the cover sheet showing the three parcels existing today. And go ahead, Dory, if you can all see that.
Thank you. Sure, thanks. So the estate of Irene Bunty is the owner of three eighty-five Pumpkin Hill Road. And that is the parcel that's colored in pink there. And actually, three eighty-five Pumpkin Hill Road has two different assessors, map block and lot numbers, but it is only one parcel presently. And the reason there's two different assessors cards is because there's one card for the cell tower that's being leased at the rear of the property, which is, I believe, just over ten acres. And then there's another card for the front, roughly ten acres, which includes a house. The second parcel that we're going to be talking about is the parcel in yellow. That's owned by Tim Bunty, and that's three ninety-three Pumpkin Hill Road. That's about seventy acres. These parcels are, and on that yellow piece, let me just say, there is a single-family home that exists there right now. What we have before you is a request technically for three lots. And the reason I say three is because the yellow piece, which we'll talk about in a second, which was created when Tim's parents deeded that land to him in nineteen eighty-four. I believe, based on the title history we've done, should have gotten subdivision approval, but it didn't. So as part of what we're requesting today, we figured, let's bring this before you and get that blessed as well. Really, the impetus of this application is to divide the pink parcel, three eighty-five into two separate parcels. And that's because now that the estate or Irene has passed in the lands in the estate, ideally, what my client would like to do in settling that estate is to carve off a parcel with the house that's presently existing on it and be able to sell that separately and retain the rest of the acreage that has a cell tower lease on it and just hold that. Now, in order to divide three eighty-five into the two, we needed to make sure we satisfied the health department that we could have a code-compliant system and reserve area both for the house that's presently existing there, but also if any development were to occur on the balance of the piece, the balance of the piece, meaning what's shown now in pink, lot three. And we do have a health department review and and agreement that a code-compliant area would be achievable on both lots. Or proposed lots. But again, I want to assure you, there's no new development that's being proposed. Tim's lot, the yellow lot, he has his home on. Again, that is just being here to hopefully be blessed because it didn't, it didn't receive subdivision approval back in in eighty-four, when it was first cut off. But no new improvements are proposed there. And then there's no new improvements proposed on the the two new lots, I should say, that are being created. One is really just to create a house lot with that existing house, so it can be sold. And that portion of the estate closed out. And then again, my client would be retaining the balance. So you do have a parcel history that's on on the side of the the left-hand side of your map. I don't know that we need to go through any further talk about that, but but it does demonstrate that the first cut came out when a Frenchage lot was first divided off in nineteen seventy-five. I believe that's now owned by Mizac. The second division, again, which should have received approval, was created in nineteen eighty-four. I wasn't working with a client or with the town on that. I don't know exactly what transpired back then, but thirty-eightish years ago, it was deeded out with a running description from parents to to son. You'll see that green lot there. Eric points out the green lot. That was another division created in nineteen ninety-five, but it's an ag lot. So that did not technically require subdivision approval. We're not asking to do anything with that. It's going to continue to exist as an ag lot. It is owned by Tim Bunty as well. I don't know if at some point in the future, it may be merged into what's being shown as lot one, but right now it's just going to stay as is and as it was filed on the land records as an ag lot. So so again, no new constructions proposed. We have have made a referral to the Wetlands Commission, just because there are some wetlands on the site. I think that those are shown on Gardner and Peterson's map, and I think they're back in the general vicinity of where the cell tower is. But again, we're not asking for a permit to do any work, so we didn't need a specific permit from Wetlands, just their review of the plan. We have, as I mentioned, gotten health department approval. The lots, as we've laid them out, Eric, can you go back to the first plan that was colored up that shows that? No, the second plan, sorry, with the blue. There you go. The lots, as we've laid them out, are compliant with your subdivision regulations with regard to lot size and configuration and area and all of that. So so I do believe that they're conforming lots. And 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 they're therefore, if they conform and comply with your regulations, they they hopefully will warrant your agreement that they should be approved as as valid subdivision lots. Now, we do ask for a couple of waivers in connection with this application. And the first one I'm going to talk about is actually the first two I'm going to talk about is with regard to the yellow lot, which is the three eighty-five, I'm sorry, three ninety-three Pumpkin Hill Road. And the waivers there specifically, which I mentioned in my narrative that accompanied the application, is we're asking for a waiver of the requirement to show the full dimensions of lot one. So that lot one, that's seventy acres, which has been in existence now for about thirty-eight years, has not been fully surveyed. When it was created by deed, there was a running description in the deed. I'm not really sure where those courses and distances came from, but there was no recorded map along with it, but it hasn't been fully surveyed. And it's a large parcel, and because it's such a large parcel, the survey would be quite extensive. And therefore, since it's been in existence for so many years and it's separately assessed and your your town staff doesn't seem to have a problem with it, then we're just asking for a waiver that the the full lot dimensions of lot one not be required. Same with the requirement of providing lot boundary markers on lot one. Again, in your regulations, section two ninety-five dash forty-eight E, it specifically says, if it's a large lot and the commission so agrees that it's not necessary, you can waive the requirement for those lot boundary markers. So we are asking for that. The second thing that we're asking for is a waiver of any requirement to dedicate open space in connection with this subdivision. So your regulations say that if you're proposing three or more lots, then typically you'd be looking for about twenty percent open space. So I want to talk about that for a minute. So we are asking for a waiver. We don't think that there is an open space requirement or need here. So we'd like you to waive that requirement. And although today we are technically asking for approval of three lots, I want you to keep in mind that that lot one, that yellow area is thirty-eight years old and was created many years ago. It's been in existence since nineteen eighty-four. And even had it gone through subdivision approval at that time, it wouldn't have required open space because it would be exempt as a transfer of if there's a transit in your regulations and statute allows, if there's a transfer of land from parent child, it's exempt from the open space regulation. So it was transferred thirty-eight more or less years ago and has retained that ownership. So we believe that that would be an exempt transfer, which really leads us with the two new lots that we're seeking, which I don't think would necessarily trigger the open space requirement. And and when we talk about open space, you know, the law talks about if you're going to require some open space, there needs to be, indeed, the the need needs to be attributable to the actual subdivisions. There should be a nexus between the need for open space and the dedication of open space. We don't think that there's a need for open space here because since nineteen eighty-four, a significant portion of this land has been in the P A four ninety open space category designated as such with with the assessor. So for over thirty-five, thirty-eight years, it's been preserved and protected as open space anyway, as part of that P A four ninety program. So the the P A four ninety acreage is in the on the yellow lot, the seventy acres there, sixty-nine acres have been preserved since nineteen eighty-four as open space. And on the on the pink and the blue lot, there's just under ten acres that's that's being preserved right now and has been since nineteen eighty-four as open space as well. That ten acres is not the rear half where the cell tower leases. It's the frontage. And a number of that that will, we expect to remain even after the house lot is carved off. So so we do feel that that open space, number one, because we're really only talking about creating two lots, doesn't really trigger the need and or the requirement. And number two, we don't think the need is there because the land in effect has been preserved for thirty-some-odd years as open space anyway. So those are the waivers we're requesting. Those are the the lots and the general configurations that we're talking about that appear on the plan right before you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dor.
You're welcome.
I guess something that comes to mind for me to get the ball rolling is I know there was nothing required based on the fact you have no construction, no development going on in the area. However, has the Inland Wetlands Commission issued a statement of review?
Um, if Mike's got audio, he can chime in. I can tell you that I did get an email from Bruce Fitzback on November twenty-ninth that says, hello, Dory, I hope you had a good holiday. The Wetlands Commission at the November meeting gave a positive recommendation for the Bunty subdivision. But I did not get any formal letter. Did you get any letter, Tim? I didn't get any formal letter. I just got that that email. Again, that was dated November twenty-ninth, and that was at the Wetlands Commission meeting in November. Is the date of that November first, I believe.
First, and that was Bruce Fitzback?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions from commission members on for the applicant and the representative?
Oh, hi, this is Janet Bellamy. I just for my information, what's what's the definition of an ag lot?
Okay, um, I'd be happy to answer that. So I'm not sure that there's technically a definition of an ag lot, but the statutes that talk about requiring subdivision approval speak to if there's a division of land into three lots or more after the adoption of subdivision regulations. Unless the lot is being divided for agricultural purposes or conservation purposes or or no, no immediate development, as intended. So because this is a lot that is not, there's been no development, either proposed or intended to be proposed since it was created in nineteen ninety-five and was was just divided out of the homestead for general agricultural and conservation purposes. It did not require statutory, it's statutorily, I should say, it didn't meet the definition of subdivision. Okay. Did that help?
A little bit. Thank you.
Yeah, Janet, this is Dick. I think the short explanation, it's a landlocked parcel that has no access to the road, can't be developed, and is only used for agricultural means.
Okay, thank you.
Don't be shy. Anyone else have any questions?
Open for comments, Jeff?
Surely.
It seems rather straightforward to me. I don't see anything that would raise a question because basically it's leaving in place things that have been there for thirty-five, forty years.
And it does have the, you know, as for the the waiver requests that are being thought, the fact that a vast majority of it still falls under the P A four ninety open space. You know, some of seventy out of the ninety acres are yeah, almost seventy out of the ninety acres take care of are covered by that open space or continue to be serviced by that open space. I'm not having any issue with that personally.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Brock, go ahead.
I, not to this is certainly not speaking in opposition to anything that's being presented. I just want to clarify that the P A four ninety designation is not a durable designation. That's not something that is irrevocable. It's basically simply a tax status so that that land is taxed at a more favorable rate. And if that status is vacated by the owner at some point, then there's mechanisms to try to recoup some of that. But I just don't, I want, I want to ensure that everyone that's participating understands that P A four ninety is not a method for preserving land in lieu of set-asides, not that I'm advocating for that. I just want to make sure everyone understands.
Open space. No, I appreciate that, Luther, and I didn't mean to give that indication. You know, I just know that there, it's not like there's nothing there, and it's not like there hasn't been anything there for thirty-some-odd years covering that too. But thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, but just as a point, if it's been classified as four ninety for thirty-eight years, the to bring it out of four ninety into development of properties, you'd have to go back and pay all the forgiven taxes for those thirty-eight years, which is a pretty high hurdle.
It's it's actually only for ten, but it's still, it's still not nothing.
Yeah, there's there's still a downside to doing such.
Are you allowing open questions, sir?
Actually, no, this is part of the board itself. We're really not having public discussion. This is a presentation to the board, but I appreciate your effort. You're touching base on us. Thank you for asking. And Dor, I just wanted to clarify, you did say that we had, you had received back the and provided Michael with the information regarding the butters at this point?
Yes, I had sent those notices out right after I learned of my requirement to to send them, which was the day of your last meeting. So those went out probably right around December fifteenth. I emailed a copy of what I sent, which was I kind of, since there's no public hearing, I just made up my own notice to a butters on a letter and said notice to a butters. I can read it to you, actually. And I included a copy of the application and the narrative, and it said, Dear Butter, oh, it was dated December twelfth, sorry. Dear Butter, please be advised that the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission will be reviewing an application for a three-lot subdivision for property at three eighty-five and three ninety-three Pumpkin Hill Road, Ashford, owned by the estate of Irene Bunty and Tim Bunty, at its regular meeting on January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. A copy of the application is attached A copy of the application is attached here, too. You are being sent this notice because you own property within two hundred feet of the property that is the subject of the application. A complete copy of the application is available for public review in the Towns Land Use Office. Then I signed it on behalf of the applicant and included those enclosures. I do have a copy of the certificate of mailings that I had scanned and emailed to Mike. And if for some reason, I know he can't seem to respond, but if for some reason he can't locate that, I'm happy to do that again. I I have all of that here.
Thank you. At this point in time, this is kind of a bit of a funky situation, different type of situation in that it is not a hearing. So to that end, even though I just shut down this Kaufman, I I would open it up to any input from a butters that are attending and wish to respond regarding the applicant's request. Is there anyone on from that is a contacted a butter?
Oh, yes, I'm I'm in a butter.
Okay, did you wish to speak? Did you wish to address anything regarding?
Not really, not really. I'm just interested in in, you know, what's happening.
Okay.
But it sounds, it sounds okay to me. I I'm the little postage stamp size.
I see that right there. You're the little box inside the purple there. Is that you?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, Ms. Epp. Okay, well, thank you for your input. I just wanted to give anyone who did attend due to that communication, the opportunity to speak, obviously, in that area, though not a lot is going on, it is, you know, you are the most closely affected, obviously, for anything for the future. So.
It doesn't sound like anything's gonna change, really. I mean, it, you know, except on paper.
Right, right, just basically getting the 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 nature of the lots and all that setup. So. Any further discussion from the commission? Whether it's question or just discussion or input, commission members and alternate members in attendance?
Jeff, this is Luther again. I I just, I'm sorry, I had to move rooms, so I apologize for the poor lighting.
You're ghostly.
Yeah, apologies. My my question is in and and forgive me because I don't have a huge depth of experience with the subdivision process. But in reading through the subdivision regulations, it appears as though there are actually only two circumstances in which the town is allowed to waive the open space requirements. It's not, it's not that the town has at its discretion whether it enforces that or not, you know, the language is the town shall set aside open space. Unless one of two circumstances take place, one being that the land is being designated for development for low income housing, the other being the case that I believe was trying was being attempted to be made, that it was a a transfer between family members. I don't, I don't know the ramifications of that, but I just wonder if that's something that we need to have reviewed prior to taking a position as a as a commission.
What are what in the nature, what what's the nature of the review you're looking for? Luther, that those are
If the case that's being made that this is a transfer between family members is is valid because of the time separation, I'm not saying it is or isn't, I just don't know. It's a complicated position, I think, in terms of we're being asked to divide and recognize a previous division, I think. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're holding ourselves in compliance with the regulations.
I could address that if you would allow, Mr. Chairman.
Please go right ahead, Mr. Maldetti.
So when I was reviewing your regulations, a couple of things came to mind. Number one, in section two ninety five dash twenty three of your regulations, it specifically says that open space dedication shall be deemed appropriate for all subdivisions or re subdivisions when land, I'm sorry, re subdivisions of land, when three or more lots are proposed. So so that's where I'm focusing in on. It's only a requirement to set aside open space if three or more lots are proposed. Now, I did mention that technically we are looking for approval of that third lot that actually it's shown as lot one, the yellow lot that was created thirty eight years ago. But that being an exempt transfer, because again, both statutorily and per your regulations, it was transfer from parent to child. I then read two lots, non exempt, and I don't think that your regulation requires then the imposition of the open space. So so that's that's how I'm getting there. Also, regardless of even if we say, nope, there's three lots, that's it. We have to therefore require open space. We have to read these regulations in conjunction with the law on open space and federal Supreme Court law is very clear that you can't just for the sake of open space mandate open space unless there's a need. And there's a lot of federal law on this that there has to be, as I mentioned earlier, that nexus between the need for open space and the subdivision, so or the the dedication of open space as a result of the subdivision. So is this subdivision creating a need for open space? And and as I would argue, for seventy or for thirty eight years, seventy eight acres has been protected as open space. There's and and ample amount will continue to be protected even after this division. So I don't think there's a need. I don't think the requirement arises because of the fact that the the existing seventy acre lot was an exempt lot. And that that's how I interpret the regulations and the law applicable to the open space.
Thank you. Thank you for that interpretation.
You're welcome.
Jeff, I think the butter summarized the position pretty well in her comments. There's really nothing that's being proposed here that changes the circumstances of the use of this land. And the only thing that really is substantive is the carbon out of that blue lot such that it can be sold separate from everything else there. But the yellow lot is going to pretty much stay the same. And the pinkish purplish lot is going to stay the same, although a different size. My sense is that there really isn't much to stand in the way of the commission approving this.
Okay. Again, I ask for any further input or questions of the commission members. This is our time to discuss this as opposed to coming out of a hearing and discussing it. This is where we really talk about it in a meeting and look to be actionable. So you know, we need to get out all of the any concerns or any input at this point. So please share with us your thoughts if you have any on the subject.
This is Janet. I I I I agree with Dick. I think there's not much change except selling Mrs. Bunty's house and property to someone else. I are are you feeling that we need to ask Mike Tomato about the open space requirement? It doesn't seem to me that it's needed since there is that large lot.
Now, this is difficulties at all. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, one person at a time. Go right ahead. Um, uh, Mr., I'm sorry, is it? I can't see your name now. Is it from Peterson? Can you take us off of the maps, please? Thank you very much. Eric Peterson. Thank you very much. Okay, so who was speaking? Who made a statement after Janet? I'm sorry.
I'd like to hear from Mike Tomato. This is Nord. I'd like to hear from Mike Tomato if only paperwork requirements have been fulfilled for this transfer.
I am looking for Mike Tomato. He must have had to come off. Let me just see here under participants. No. No camera. I don't know what the hosting little cloud means.
Um. The cloud is the recording, Jeff.
Thank you. So we are still recording. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Mike is still showing as being on the meeting.
Yeah, that's what I see, too. Just don't know if his audio works.
Oh, I'm getting texts. Hang on. Still can't fix my audio. How about this, Mike? Can you call my phone? I would, I would too like to get a little bit of input from Mike on this, so. I can put him on speaker and see if that works for you folks to catch any of what he's saying.
Well, you should be able to call in by phone as well.
Then I thought of that, too. I was just wondering what would be easier for him, depending. I don't know how many computers he's trying to run right now. Here he comes right now. Michael. Hi there. I have you on speaker. Um, give a test to the group here, see if they can hear you.
Everybody hear me?
I got thumbs up.
Yeah.
I got thumbs up all around. Okay, very good. So, Michael, um, regarding the paperwork and everything, Nord had a question regarding has all paperwork submission been reviewed and approved?
We have the application, the narrative, the application form. We have the notification of required mailings and notification to wetlands. All was provided.
Okay, and Wetlands did get back with a review according to Dory, that at least an email saying that it was a positive response from Wetlands?
Yeah, and I believe that was done at their November meeting.
Right. Okay. Um, now, the issue regarding the dedicated open space. Do you have any input or is it something we should probably take or should we take this to Ken?
So you're talking about
The waiver, the waiver on the open space requirement due to the fact that it has been it's it's an established and it was a transfer from a parent to a child?
familial transfer of of land within a subdivision within and and basically that transfer from being subject to the open space requirement if the if the application is seems to be paying like a fee in lieu of. And then if if you're talking about actual set aside, it wouldn't be a situation where, oh, well, if you sell it to a third party, you have to set aside open space. But if you sell it to your 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 son, you you don't have to. They would choose to do, like I said, a fee in lieu, but they're requesting that waiver, which is part of the requirements within the subdivision regs and unlike the zoning regulations, they can request a waiver from that section. And and the commission can determine that that's an appropriate request. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
So you're saying it is within our power to waive such as to approve such a waiver of request?
Yeah.
When it comes to the subdivision.
Specifically subdivision criteria, yes.
Does that help you at all, Luther?
Yes, and and I I want to again be very clear that I have I have no interest in in affecting the outcome in any direction other than to make sure that we're we're doing this correctly.
I I appreciate you keeping us on straight and narrow. I fully understand that and again, appreciate that.
So if I could add one other comment, when when I was looking at this from my perspective, is that because you know, much of how do I say this in a concise way, you know, based upon the total acreage and what you might see based upon the zoning regs at a ninety thousand square foot minimum lot, you could potentially end up with significantly more lots than what is being proposed. So there is an effective open space set aside in that there there's a significant amount of acreage which it chucks up to basically being one building lot. If they were to come back, if they were to do anything further, they would have to come back for re subdivision, that would all be back on the table. You're not making this decision for this piece of property forever. If they modify this in any way, they come back for re subdivision, want to add another lot or or do some major reconfiguration, they're coming back with a brand new application, requires a public hearing, and you can look at that all from the very beginning, if you feel that the open spaces is appropriate. At that point, you can make that call then.
Right, if the if the seventy acres all of a sudden gets sold off to a developer to turn it into ten subdivisions and ten developments, that's that becomes under our purview again for a separate review.
Exactly, and you can make the decision to require the open space at that point, no problem.
Right.
Jeff, breaking the centipedes. I would propose that the commission approve the waiver for the open space on the yellow lot.
And the the other request that hasn't been dealt with has to do with the not being fully surveyed and no boundary markers on again, a lot that's been in place for almost forty years. I haven't heard anyone say yea or nay on that at this point. Is there any input regarding that request for waiver?
I I would add to what I just put out to that same waiver.
Yeah, I I'm not voting, but I would certainly support not having to survey a lot that large. That's a really high cost point.
Oh, this is Janet. I'll second that motion.
I don't, I don't know if we have a motion. We have a statement at this point. That's okay.
I did make a motion.
Well, Jeff, I would form of a motion. Am I off mute?
No, you're good, Doug. Go ahead.
I I would recommend if one emotion is created to be specific about the parcel number you're talking about relative to the application. The application I'm reading off our OneDrive doesn't have any yellow, red, or green on it. Just a recommendation to the commission.
So.
If Dory could, if Dory could add that detail, then we would have the lot designations as opposed to colors.
The numbers and parcel numbers are in the application already, Doug. You just have to cite that. The numbers and parcel numbers are in the application already, Doug. You just have to cite that. If someone
The yellow lot, um, just for clarification purpose, the yellow lot that Dick was referring to is lot number one shown on the plan. The blue lot was lot number two as shown on the plan, and the pink lot was lot number three as shown on the plan. And just to be clear, we're asking for a waiver of open space for the, everything that's being presented to you for, for the, for the whole application tonight.
So I am trying to make a motion that is succinct. Is that we would propose to waive the open space requirements for lots one, two, and three of the application. And for the same lots, waive the requirement to survey those lots.
If I could just, um, again, Dory Famagletti, just clarify that the waiver for the survey really only applies to lot one.
Yep.
The other two lots have been fully surveyed.
So what we're really looking for here is, one, a motion to approve the applicant's application for a subdivision of, uh, 385 and 393 Pumpkin Hill Road. Included in that application approval is a waiver to lot one. Otherwise known as 393 Pumpkin Hill Road. And a waiver for a, uh, not requiring a full survey or boundary markers. So that's A. And B would be a request for a waiver for dedicated open space. For lots. Excuse me. Would that be one, three? And four, is that right, Dory?
No, I believe it'd be, um, Mr. Chairman, one, two, and three.
One, two, and three. Oh, lots one, two, and three. Okay.
Right, as shown on the plan.
How come the assessor, the application says one, three, and four?
The application, um. Um, let me look at that. The, the narrative doesn't, but I'm wondering. Oh, one, three, and four are the assessors' parcel numbers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yep, that's on the application. Those are different.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, uh, waiver for, uh, dedicated open space for lots one, two, and three as submitted in application site plan. Is that specific enough, Doug?
Yes, Jeff.
Thank you.
Sounds reasonable.
Thank you. Uh. And Mike and I can, um, work with, well, let's find out. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the applicant's, um, application with, uh, two waivers. Uh, one for lot one of the fully survey, the full survey and, uh, no requirement for the boundary markers at this time on lot one. And the waiver for dedicated open space for lots one, two, and three, uh, as submitted in the application.
And Jeff, I sent over to you, uh, some suggested additional conditions. I can, I can read them out to you if you, if you want, or tell to everybody.
Please, please do.
So the motion would be to approve the three lot subdivision, 385, 393 Pumpkin Hill Road, referencing plans of, uh, the estate of Irene Bunge, prepared by gardener Peterson, nine sixteen twenty-two, sheets one through three. With the waiver requests as submitted by the applicant of their application. With the finding that the, in the Wetlands Commission, um, had acted on the application or determined that no application was necessary at the November first, 2022 meeting. Um, and the conditions as follows. Conditions which must be met prior to the signing of my Lars, condition one. A copy of the final approved plans with all revisions shall be submitted to the zoning officer for review. All final plans submitted for signature shall require the seal and live signature of the appropriate professionals responsible for their preparation. Three, the exemption from the open space requirement shall be noted on the final my Lars along with the notice saying that any, uh, lot shall be, is subject to the waiver. Four, the plans shall be modified to include a copy of this approval. A copy of any approval from the Eastern Highlands Health District. The expiration date of this subdivision approval and to indicate the total buildable area as defined for each of the three lots. General conditions, within one year, the fire mylar shall, with signature, shall be filed town clerk's office and digital PDF provided to the zoning officer. The conditions of this approval shall be binding upon the applicant, landowners, their successors and assigns. Any modifications to utilities, easements, or grading are subject to review by town staff. This project shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the final my Lars. Minor modifications to the approved plans that result in lesser impacts may be allowed subject to staff approval. And by accepting this approval and its conditions, the applicant and owner and/or successors or assigns acknowledge the right of town staff to peer out to enter on subject property for the purpose of determining compliance with the terms of this approval.
Got all that in, Valerie?
Um, if you want that, I'll
Mike will, Mike will provide all the information to you. But first, we need to, we need to do something first. Okay, so there is a very long motion on the board, and if you ask me to repeat it, you're gonna, you're gonna be right out of luck. However, there is a motion on the board, uh, for the commission. All those in favor of approving the applicant's application with all stipulations and requirements, as Mike has indicated, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you, Dory. Thank you, um, Monday, and good, best of luck.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Who, who seconded the motion?
Yeah, I didn't hear that either.
I took a vote. I got so excited. I'm sorry. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, Jeff, I made the motion.
Richard made the motion.
And Janet seconded.
And Janet has seconded the motion.
Um, wait a minute, wait a minute. I thought Mike was making the motion. He made
Mike, Mike, Mike cannot, Mike cannot make motions. Mike was, Mike was, if Mike was putting the information in for us to make a formulated motion.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, fine.
And he will provide that full information to you because he did such an eloquent job.
All right.
Mr. Brock.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just a suggestion or a comment perhaps for future, uh, agenda items of this complexity that might uh, require such a motion. I've observed in, in other commission, uh, activities in other towns. They'll often have readily drafted motions for support uh, for just such an occasion so that they can be part of the packet materials that go out in advance that the commission would understand what a motion, uh, for might look like. I don't know if that's something that the commission would, would want to include in the materials that go out. You know, the language that that might look like, just so people have time to digest and understand it.
Thank you, Luther. I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, does that, does that make for a preconceived, uh, opinion out there as to, but yeah, it would be good to have all the information. Also, we've run into some technical difficulties with, uh, Michael not being available except by phone at this point as opposed to being a, uh, part of the discussion, so.
Yeah, Luther, I think most of the essence of what we've talked about was included in what Dorian had submitted previously.
Right, but all the conditions that Mike set as part of that motion were not part of any of that.
Right, most of that is, most of what Mike was indicating seemed to be captured in our rules and regula, in our regulations, however, uh, the fact it needed to be applied to the applicant's request, I think, uh, yeah, could be, uh, supplied earlier for us to at least review as what's being announced.
This, uh, this is Janet. I, I agree with Luther. I think something that long and involved, it would be nice if we could have it in advance to read.
Not, not suggesting that Mike is getting it wrong at all. I just
No, 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 no.
It'd be just easier for the commission member to feel comfortable making that motion if they want to support it because they don't have to come up with all that language on the spot. They would have something to work from.
Mm-hmm, and if you think he came up with that on the spot, then you're giving him a lot more credit. I'm sure he had forethought on that. So, thank you. Okay, very good. We've taken the vote. We kind of went backwards, but you say we've, uh, had the motion, seconded the motion, taken the vote. It has been approved. Thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, moving on to be on new business, uh, PZ dash two, three, dash one, text amendment application to article three hundred dash fourteen in definitions and article three hundred dash nineteen, the interstate interchange development zone. Uh, applicant Campagnelli, Ritaliskis, LM Acquisitions LLC, and Astro Reality Trust LLC. This is simply a receipt of the application. Um, and Mike went, got tired of me screaming in his ear with my phone right here. So, uh, I'm going to assume that, uh, all of the, uh, having been put on the agenda and assuming that all of the fees, all of the paperwork have been applied. And we would need to be scheduling a hearing for, um, our next meeting in February for this. Okay, so I am looking for a motion to receive the application, uh, for the tax amendment change.
Motion to receive.
Richard, thank you. A second.
Janet, keep, keep it going.
Well, I'll, I'll second this. All right.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the application?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstain, abstentions? So moved. Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is actually, says the election of officers, but I keep thinking Alex is just trying to get me out of this job because he keeps putting it on here, and I don't think we're due because we didn't have biennial elections. And as per our, uh, bylaws, um, we have our elections following the, uh, biennial, uh, local governmental elections. And we didn't have any of those. So, and also it should be in the month following, so it should be in December. So unless I'm off, I'd like to not table this, but just, um, uh, basically, uh, ask for a removal from, uh, unless, unless someone wants to step up, I'd be happy to do election of officers right here and now.
I move to pass until next year.
Okay, and all, all those, uh, in favor of removing from the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed? Abstentions?
And since you didn't have a second, I'll, I'll second it, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeez, I've been out of touch here for a while. Thank you, Dick. Okay, so now, review of bylaws. Will not belabor this too, too much. I have, I'd really like to get to the other discussion, uh, more than anything. Is there anything specific that anyone has regarding the, uh, any concerns they have about the bylaws as they are written at this time?
Mark Schnewell. There's, uh, there's four spelling errors on the last page, page three. At least in my copy, section seven, last sentence, decide is spelled incorrectly.
You actually read it?
I did. There are not that, there's only three pages.
I'm sorry.
After anything, I, I, what's that telling me with you laughing and asking Mark that? No, no, it's okay.
So
What else, Mark? Go ahead.
And so, so the first is section seven, the last sentence, decide is spelled incorrectly. The next is article ten, the last sentence, um, employing is spelled incorrectly.
Okay.
And article eleven, acceptance is spelled incorrectly as well as six.
And six. Very good. Thank you, Mark.
Jeff, I, if I understand the regulations correctly with the state, uh, these bylaws need to, uh, pretty much parallel what is approved by the state, which I'm assuming is the case. Is that correct?
Uh, so for chapters, uh, it should be following the, uh, one twenty-four and one twenty-six of, uh, Connecticut, uh, planning and zoning.
Right, so, so this isn't, uh, whole cloth that is being written by Ashford. It's pretty much mirroring what the state requires.
Um. To the limitation of what the state has put in there, I'm sure there are, um, some, I mean, obviously, office of agency is local. The allowable amount of, uh, under officers and their duties, section two. The allowable amount to appoint committees and certify expenditures is a local piece. Number of members is a local piece based on our current regs. The meeting schedule for article seven is local. And what a quorum would thus result. So I mean, it's not chapter and verse for what the state is, but it is following their recommendations and requirements.
Um, Mark Schnewell, again, I just had a question for clarification on article four, membership. Is it required to have the as, the second sentence, as per the ordinance passed at town meeting held on April sixth, two thousand and nine? Is, is that something that, that's required, or can I just say the planning, you know, start with the planning and zoning shall consist members?
I don't think it's a requirement, but I think it gives a, uh, it gives a toehold into where one would find the last time, uh, it was indicated as to what the regular member should be. And what that, uh, what those requirements are. Um, you find it to be, um, either superfluous or redundant. So just as per ordinance? Well, it was passed at a town meeting, so I think that would be, um, as opposed to the minutes of a regular scheduled meeting or anything like that. Um. I, I'm more comfortable with having it in there unless other, other people are of a mind, have it removed.
That's why I was just looking for clarification. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else from anyone regarding the bylaws? A move for a motion to, with the corrections to spelling as indicated, uh, by Mark
Make a motion.
By these minutes, a motion to accept the bylaws.
Make a motion, Mark Schnewell.
Mark? Seconded by Jerry on mute. Jerry, you want to unmute so Valerie knows I'm not lying? Jerry, you're still muted.
Jerry, you hit the unmute button.
Okay, there you go. All that to say second?
Second.
Second by Jerry. Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the bylaws, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Thank you very much. Thank you for the review, Mark. Appreciate it. All right, last item on the new business, um, review of definitions for primary residents. And again, this goes back to, I'll give you a little background. This goes back to our most recent activity we've had on short-term rentals. Um, it came up during one of our discussions regarding the fact that we don't have a definition of primary residence, considering it is the, uh, number one requirement of, uh, someone offering up a short-term rental, uh, in Ashford being their primary residence. Um, I'm hoping most of you have picked up a copy of the, uh, or printed or looked at a copy of the example definitions of primary residence. I have spoken with the town clerk's office recently and their, um, off the cuff, not written down really anywhere, indication for primary residence was six months plus one day of someone's, um, primary inhabited, uh, where they inhabit their home for, uh, a majority of the time for a year. Uh, that in some cases meets the need, uh, in other cases, again, I'll just go through a reading if you don't have this unless, uh, Mike can bring this up if he's still on, if he's got this, uh, example of definitions. Uh, primary residence, a person's fixed permanent and/or main home for legal and tax purposes. Uh, primary residence, real property inhabited for the majority of a calendar year by an owner, renter, or tenant, including manufactured homes. Primary residence, real property, which is an owner, renter, or tenant's usual place of abode or return for housing purposes as documented by at least two of the following. One, motor vehicle registration. Two, a driver's license. Three, voter registration. Uh, four, IRS tax documentation. Five, utility bill. Primary residence, real property where an owner, renter, or tenant resides most frequently. Primary residence, a piece of real property that an individual or family utilizes as a primary place of abode. Any such individual may only have a single primary residence at any one time. And last, primary residence, real property where an owner, renter, or tenant resides more than fifty percent of the time over any six-month period. These are a number of, uh, different definitions that Mike was able to call from, uh, different sources. Um, I also have, uh, how does the IRS determine your primary residence? Uh, if you live in more than one home, the IRS determines your primary residence by one, where you spend the most time, two, your legal address listed for tax returns with the United States Postal Service and on your driver's license and on your voter registration card. So, um, I'm really opening it up to the group with some of those definitions, uh, I'm leaning toward uh, some combination, personally, I'm leaning towards some combination of a definition that includes, uh, time spent as well as, uh, documentation of that residence. Uh, to best identify someone's primary residence with us. Uh, but again, looking for anyone's, uh, input from the commission on this. Yes, Luther?
Uh, Jeff, I agree with you, uh, on this. I think that some combination of the statement made in the second example, the real property inhabited for the majority of the calendar year, uh, along with some language from the one under it, uh, in terms of documentation by at least two of the following. I think that, um, if this is going to be part of regulatory language for the town, we probably need to set the standard by which we verify residence.
Uh, this is Janet. I, I agree, um, with both Jeff and Luther. I think we definitely need to have a, a way to verify it. With, without just being a homeowner's word for it.
Yes, Mark.
Um, I'm in agreement with Luther with the exception that I, I like number three and, and the last number six, which, you know, states, uh, fifty percent or six months period of time. You know, putting a time, specific time on it.
Jeff, this is Doug. I do like the notion of a combination because that was my first thought when I read through the document that was provided to us. Um, but if, on the second item with the word majority, I guess my only comment would be if, if it's pretty clear from Ken's perspective that the word majority is defendable, then maybe such words could be used. But I, I like being as prescriptive as possible within reason.
Yeah, I think you're better off saying more than fifty percent than majority, making it more clear, clear to everyone.
Just don't want to over-construe it, but there's a balance somewhere.
Sure.
Yeah, uh, this is Luther again. Would it, would it be worth, um, you know, having a, a legal opinion of a statement like this? Run, I mean, we're all doing our best, but if this is something that we're going to cite in the regs, do we, we, we need review of this?
Uh, yeah, and I did speak with, uh, Ken Slater on this, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and, uh, his input really ran a lot along, you know, some of the things, some of the examples that were given, uh, in that the third example there, you know, whether it's voter registration or whatever. And again, you know, some of the things in here, you know, not everyone is a registered voter. Uh, not necessarily everyone has a driver's license, you know, maybe it should be, um, uh, some of the, if, if we get into more legal stance with this and have to deal and do work with Ken, maybe it's just something of a, uh, uh, whatever you call it, government-issued ID or something like that, uh, along those lines, listing your, uh, listing the proper address or something like that. Um, hmm. And, uh, again, you know, when you go to, uh, things when it deals with, uh, mortgages and things like that, one can only have one primary residence, uh, when it comes to mortgage companies. So, uh, so I'm thinking, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, I was saying, uh, since we're talking about Ashford, um, you know, it says IRS tax documentation, but we could say, you know, documentation that they're paying their, their property taxes in, in town, in Ashford.
So we can expand upon that and make it a, uh, and, and/or type of thing for, uh, you know, if you pay property taxes in town, though, it doesn't necessarily mean you're a resident.
Right, I, I, this is Mark Schnewell. I own a house in Myrtle Beach and I can certainly provide documentation that I pay property taxes, but I'm not a resident of Myrtle Beach.
Right, right.
Yeah, this is Luther again. I, I think that the list, I think Jeff touched on this a little bit. I think the list of acceptable methods of proving status, for lack of a better word. We need, we need to be carefully inclusive of that because as, as Jeff was saying, you know, when you look at the list that's provided, motor vehicle registration, not everyone has a motor vehicle, driver's license, not everyone has a driver's license. Not everyone is registered to vote. Uh, so, eh, you know, it, we do need to make sure that, you know, utility bills, if, if another person in the house is paying all the utility bills, uh, they may not have that. So I think it just needs to be carefully crafted to be inclusive and not inadvertently cut anyone out of being able to otherwise document residency.
Um, what was the, I, well, I'm sorry, Jeff, what was the IR, the IRS's statement on residency again?
Uh, the IRS was that, um, determines your primary residence by one, where you spend the most time, your legal address listed for tax returns, um, your address with the United States Postal Service and your driver's license and your voter registration card. So a combination of all of those. None of them are ors. It's really kind of a list, an all-encompassing list.
Right, and I, and I would suspect that that has, uh, you know, held up to, uh, you know, the legal standard.
Right, right.
Uh, Jeff, uh, this is Jerry DeFray.
Yes, Jerry.
Uh, today I got my renewal for my driver's license. And, uh, they have a document list to renew your driver's license. Uh, you have to have, uh, a passport. Your social security number, you have to have, uh, postmarked mail address from a bank or mortgage company, uh, with your current address, uh, you, uh, it's a a multitude of things, you know, and/or, you know, two pieces of mail with your address. Uh, there's a multitude of things, so when you go get your driver's license, make sure you have all these things because they won't give you anything. But, uh, it has quite a list of, uh, that you need at least six or seven different verifications of your residence.
Yeah, Jerry, that, that, that's in order to get the gold star on your license.
No, that's for everything. Yes, regardless of what you're getting.
I, I think it's a good point. I think it's, you know, it demonstrates the idea that there's a lot of different ways to go about it. You know, that's, that's proof of personage, you know, that's proving who you are rather than proving where you live. Um, but, but I think the, the, the point being made is that, yeah, there's a ton of things that you can use and we probably just need to get some input maybe from, from, from council or from whoever to, as to what we include.
I agree. Um, uh, Bill Fletch, yes, please, sir.
Jeff, I, you know, I know this came up a while back ago and the first thing I did was go to the definitions explained in the IRS, uh, regs. And I, I believe part of that explanation was that the majority of the year has to be lived in that residence, which goes back to your initial comments from what you heard from the town clerk's office. I would think the board would consider using the definition as explained in the IRS regs as, as the definition referred to.
I agree.
That's, uh,
Can I say something about that? I don't think we have a voter registration card in this state. I never heard. I don't have one. And I don't know, I don't, I was never asked to have one, so I don't think they use them in Connecticut, voter registration cards.
So you don't necessarily have to have a card, but you have to have voter registration and can generate that where you're a registered voter online.
Yeah, no, if, if you simply go to the Secretary of State, enter in your information, you can generate your voter registration card.
So, but yes, um, with what Bill shared, you know, maybe the, uh, the feds have the best idea because it is encompassing. Um, but maybe we can just tweak it, uh, to, uh, go with, uh, that, that definition of where you spend a, a majority or more than fifty percent of your time, as it was, as it was stated to me, is six months plus one day, uh, from the clerk's office on there. So, um, uh, what I will do though is as opposed to coming up with a, uh, well, there was something I wanted to say regarding the, um, uh, the re, the reason for this with the primary residency and our short-term regs is, um, obviously we're seeing more and more of these, and it did come up that we didn't have a definition of primary residence, uh, with at least one of the applications that came through. So I'm wondering if we need to put some type of moratorium on, uh, short-term reg requests until we get this rectified and worked out and added to our regs. Um, any input from the count, from the commission?
I think that's a good idea. To put a moratorium on to get that established.
Uh, th, this is Luther. My other question I suppose along those lines is will we need to look at um, the language of the, um, regs? Will that need adjusting, I guess, is the question? Because I can't remember off the top of my head, is it referencing primary residence or is it referencing owner of a primary residence in these, these permitted uses? Because if, you know, i- is a tenant whose primary residence is that property, is that tenant then regulatorily, or no, is, are they allowed through the regs to then do a short-term rental if they're not the owner? Because it's their primary residence. And is that the intent of the regulations? So I guess that's my question is i- if the way the regs are currently written includes tenants and, and renters um, as having the option to execute that permit.
It is identified that it is the, oh, I want, I don't want to speak out of turn here. Let me see if I can find it here.
I believe it, I'm ju, I don't want to step on you, Jeff. It, the definitions use the term owner. So you couldn't have, uh, Luther, I think you're muted.
Yep, sorry.
So you, I don't think an owner could sublease to a tenant who primarily occupied the space, who could then sublet to a third party. Because the owner.
Exactly, Mike, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Hey, Mike, you're back.
Yeah.
Finally got it to work.
Great timing. Um, okay, so, um, what, uh, Mike, any, do you know of any ramifications or issues if we do vote to, uh, have a result, have a, uh, um, a motion to, uh, hold off on accepting further applications?
Yeah, you, you can't.
Okay, that's what I was worried about. Okay.
So, so a moratorium, um, you're, you're discussing a moratorium, I think I, I heard when I, soon as I jumped in that, that Luther had mentioned. Moratorium has to be run just like a text amendment, so you'd have to draft it. Refer it to CROG, thirty days, public hearing effective, so you could have that effective as of, you know, March.
March, yeah.
Um, so.
And what if we do, now, if we do come up with a definition we want to add, then that's a text amendment to the regs. Correct?
Correct, yeah.
Which would require about the same timeframe.
Exactly. So my suggestion would be, and this obviously isn't something, um, that is, um, would be decided tonight, but, you know, obviously one of the items that was on the agenda was continued to the February meeting is a short-term rental application that was already received. Um, in the interim, um, probably the best solution would be for the commission to basically transparently review with this applicant or in any subsequent ones, what the commission views the term primary residence to mean. So that they understand what your expectation is and it's very clear that the commission's interpreting that term um, consistently, so that two members don't think it means X and two other members thinks, think it means Y. Um, and then we can, we can come up with a definition to actually insert into the regs moving from there.
Okay, all right. So what we can do is, uh, what I will do is I will go forward with, um, some measure of, uh, the IRS definition, um, including maybe something more specific as to the, the, the last, uh, primary residence definition that identifies fifty percent or more uh, and take it up with Ken and get a, uh, input from Ken on that to have for the commission for next meeting.
And then I think you can explain to any subsequent applicants that come in between. And then I think you can explain to any subsequent applicants that come in between now and any amendment revision. The commission, you know, has this criteria, this be your primary residence, which, which we feel means X. And do you meet those, that criteria? So that it's sort of a consistent uniform application absent any definition. If we were to go to court on any of these things, the court is going to pull out Merriam-Webster and they're going to, that is what they use. That is how it works. You can't have every, you can't have every word of the zoning regs defined. So in the absence of a definition, they will go to Merriam-Webster dictionary and pull out the common definition that, that sort of is the most widely used. So, so I think the commission has some discretion provided where it interpreting that language equally amongst all the members to, to explain what they think it means in lieu of an actual definition on the books.
I would echo what Bill Fletch said that the best common definition would be mirrored after what the IRS defines as primary residence with maybe a few tweaks.
Yeah, making it a bit more specific, a bit more give it, give it a bit more teeth, but still general enough that it follows that vein. And we'll bring that up with Ken if the members are comfortable with that, and I'll continue to do that. I wouldn't normally do this, but Mike, you've been such a great partner and work with us. I'd like to call on Mike Panic, who has his hand up.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one quick comment, and that is that a number six of yours where it says any 50% time over a six-month period. The state of Connecticut definition is that he or she maintains the abode during the tax year and spent 183 days, which would be exactly one day more than six months. And the reason I only bring that up is because all of the applications that have come before you guys have been for lake properties and most lake properties like mine, I am not, it's not my primary residence, but most lake properties, you could spend 50% of six months there, which would only be three months. And that seems to be, you know, the only time I use my cottage is in the summer. So that would be like May, June, July, August. So I could qualify as a primary residence, even though it's not my primary residence. So the Connecticut definition is 183 days, which is one day more than six months. And I would just caution against the number six that you use 50% of six months because all of the applications have come from lake properties, which are all, you know, could be a primary residence, like the snowbirds that go to Florida. There's a lot of people that go to the lake just for the summer. I'm one of those. So I would just caution the board to that when you get to the final regulation that you consider it 50% of an entire year and not 50% of six months, because that is the standard.
And the 183 really falls in line with some precedent in town when we talk to the town clerk's office and they say six months plus one day.
Exactly. I agree 100% with that. And thank you for letting, hearing me for a second.
Sure. And the last one I'll just reach out to is Mr. Trotta. You're still on mute.
Thank you. Appreciate the, the opportunity for, to provide a brief comment. I would just offer to the commission on two things, and I think it's very in line with where you're going, but I just want to just put it, make it clear is that when setting definitions, you want to stay away from two things. Number one, things that could be subjective. So use of words such as majority or frequently, which I, you know, it's a good to stay away from, which I'm hearing you stay away from, which I applaud. But the second piece of that instrument is that to be cautious of things that cannot be substantiated. So when we talk about things such as six-month period or six months plus one day, you know, be cautious of how one could substantiate that information. So I would just offer that to be of caution as you would review with counsel, you know, and what the intent of the, of the objective of the, of the definition is to be.
Okay, thank you. Good. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Okay.
Yes. Just really quickly, I just want to say I agree with Rob, and I think that's why it's important to have, say, legal address used for tax purposes. Because that's, you know, that's substance, substantive and they can, you can prove it as opposed to, oh, I lived here for six months.
Right, right. Okay. Anything else from the commission members? Thank you again. We'll have something for you for the next meeting after speaking with legal counsel. Okay, zoning officer report. Mike, what do you got for us since you came back just in time?
Other than running the applications that we have through the, through the commission process and working on the definitions of primary residence and some other zoning related items that I've been working on. Nothing, nothing notable. Applications or zoning applications are starting to slow down because it's, we're getting into that sort of slow part of the year. But other than that, it's been pretty quiet.
Well, it will be a good time for us to pick up on the plan of affordable housing and getting that put into place to get that monkey off our back, so to speak. And follow through on that. So we'll work on that. You and I will have a talk and see where we need to go and what we need from the commission to do.
Yeah, and I just, if I could just mention really quick, because it reminded me, the, I don't know if others had gotten this correspondence or not, but the the, the sort of every other year, Connecticut Bar Association land use training, which happens typically at Wesleyan. Yep. So that, they just, they just released the date for it. It's going to be, what was it, the Saturday in March? I think it's, I think it was the 18th. So I just want to put that out there for folks. I'll, I'll scan a copy of the pamphlet that we got so we can provide it to people for the February meeting. But just so that you know that that's out there if people are interested. And then I did, I believe I did. I did put a copy of the most recent Affordable Housing Plan draft in the meeting materials folder through the agenda, just to give everyone a sense of kind of where things stand after the public survey and some of the other things that we, we've kind of gone through. So that just kind of to your point, Jeff, about picking that up and finishing it off.
Oh, this is Janet. I have a request. My printer wouldn't print out that draft except one page at a time. Could, could I pick one up at the land use office?
Yeah. Yeah, just, just let, just let me know when you want to come by and we'll leave it out. No problem at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mike, I saw a thing on the town website about changing the hours of the land use office. It pretty much precluded the evening hours when a lot of people would be stopping by to ask questions. Is there a rationale behind that?
So the evening hours, we had been a, basically by appointment only for the evening hours for a substantial amount of time. I mean, obviously through COVID, but even after, based, there's, there's really myself in the building official or not full-time with the town. So rather than being there when no one's there and then not there when people need us there, we're trying to go to appointments so we can more effectively align our schedules with when people need us. But the change to the land use hour, the land use office hours that you're referencing, it's related to the fact that our full-time land use clerk Katie is currently out on maternity leave. So we have someone helping out temporarily. So we have some limited hours while Katie's out.
Okay, anything else for Mike? Thank you, folks. That leads to some of you folks' favorite time. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Jerry, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Mark Schnubel.
Second from Mark. All those in favor? I got that vote right tonight. Okay, very good. Thank you all for your input and I look forward to next month's meeting. Lots of, lots of work to do. Thank you.